At seven, no, seven seventeen PM, uh, okay. All right, so roll call vote because we have virtual people, Irv.
Present.
Tillman.
Present.
Jennifer.
Present.
Anna.
Present.
Sarah.
Present.
William.
Here.
Bridgette.
Present.
Deb.
Here.
And Sarah Bass, we are here, okay. So our first matter is public comment, um, so I will invite people to come and make three minutes, and please state your name and your affiliation with the district so our minutes can be accurate, please. Okay, hello, Ms. McGee.
Good evening, Kamiko McGee, I am, um, being here at the high school. I'm gonna just wanna read a statement, um, regarding a letter that was sent to the school committee. "Once again, we are confronted with an another anonymous letter, individuals throwing rocks and hiding their hands, allegedly representing the rank and file members of the APA. In reality, this is an attempt by those on holding on to white supremacist culture and corruption to circumvent the authority of our duly elected diverse executive board and weaponize APA for their own agenda. Any APA member has the right to bring an issue before the Rep Council and request a vote of the entire membership. However, neither the executive board nor the union's primary decision-making body, the Rep Council, were involved in this. For a vote to be legitimate, it must adhere to established protocols that ensure fairness, inclusivity, and confidentiality. Not all members were afforded the opportunity to participate, raising significant concerns about the integrity of this process and fundamental breach of democratic principles. One member reported not knowing anything about a vote. Another member reported that this temperature check was not communicated as a vote at all. During my tenure as APA president, I faced persistent efforts by certain individuals to undermine my leadership. This pattern of behavior is a hallmark of white supremacist tactics. When they cannot control a black leader, they seek to bypass or remove them altogether. However, the vast majority of our members recognize these tactics for what they are. After George Floyd's murder, the APA made a commitment to anti-racism, ensuring that our leaders engage in continuous education and working in collaboration with the district to financially support anti-racism training for all members. The recently released audit showing control deficiencies confirms what many of us have long suspected. There are individuals who seek to sow chaos for their own benefit. A lack of protocols to ensure transparency and accountability created an environment in the district where financial management nepotism and greasy palms thrived. Those who attempt to expose misconduct face severe retaliation with character assassination as a primary weapon. Beneficiaries of past corruption are now reacting with hostility. But the era of secret dealings and self-serving interests in ARPS is over. We will advance a culture of transparency, accountability, competence, and efficiency. That is what our students, educators, and our community demand and deserve. Thank you."
Um, if you wanna email me the whole statement, we can have it attached to our desk, if you want. Sure.
Sorry, yeah, um, Georgia Malcolm. "In recent weeks, I've watched with deep concern as the integrity of our district's leadership and the principles of transparency, equity, and accountability have been undermined. When I stepped into the role as the APA president, I did so with a commitment to transparency, fairness, and the well-being of our educators and students. However, it has become increasingly clear that these values are not being upheld equally for all. Our district has a superintendent who is doing exactly what she was asked to do by the board, asking the hard questions, identifying financial irregularities, and demanding transparency. Instead of being supported in this critical work, she has been met with resistance, hostility, and targeted efforts to push her out. The very administrators who should be accountable to the public are instead working behind the scenes to assailant her, using the APA as a tool to do their bidding. Let's be clear, this is not about performance or leadership. This is about power, money, and maintaining a status quo where six-figure salaries remain unchecked and oversight is seen as a threat rather than a necessity. When a black leader holds up a mirror to systemic issues, the response is often swift and punitive. The playbook is predictable. Vilification, anonymous accusations, and public shaming, all designed to make black leadership untenable. Meanwhile, white counterparts are allowed to exit gracefully, given privacy and professional pathways forward. I resigned as the APA president because I refused to be complicit in a process that lacks integrity. The union should not be weaponized to protect those who fear accountability. If members of the APA truly stand for justice and fairness, we must recognize when you're being manipulated and refuse to participate in efforts that undermine our very stated values. Values that we, the APA, committed to after the death of George Floyd, which was to be an anti-racist organization and promote democratic processes, transparency, shared power, and diversity to include voices of marginalized groups. Unfortunately, this is no longer the case as our district is now a microcosm of America. To some of my colleagues, this is a defining moment. Will you allow yourselves to be used as pawns in power struggle? Or will you stand for the principles you claim to uphold? Leadership should be held in the same standards, regardless of race, regardless of gender, and regardless of whose interests are at stake. I urge all stakeholders to look beyond the noise, question the motivations behind these attacks, and demand the same fairness and due process for a superintendent that we would expect for anyone else. Justice is not selective. Integrity is not conditional. And our district's future depends on our willingness to uphold, to hold true to both."
I'm Annalise Kettrell. I am a parent of a seven-year-old and ten-year-old at Fort River.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you for being here. Thank you for what you do. I'm here to address a concerning and deeply troubling incident that occurred this week involving verbal assault and bullying of educators and parents by certain members of our community on Monday. Excuse me. I was subjected to a highly distressing experience on school grounds, which I believe demands immediate attention and action. I was verbally assaulted by two parents while on school property. Despite my repeated request for the situation to stop, I was continued to be screamed at and my character attacked. The two individuals blocked my attempts to leave the situation, further escalating the hostility and causing significant distress. I expressed that I felt unsafe and asked for them to stop, but my words went un- ignored. They were also asked to leave by building, the building by educators. That was also ignored. This event not only left me shaken, but it also raises serious concerns about the safety and well-being of everyone involved. The impact of being yelled at and harassed in this manner is not something that I take lightly. As educators and members of this community, one that I love dearly, we are entrusted with fostering an environment of respect, inclusion, and safety. The actions of these parents violated that trust. I am concerned about the potential impact that this kind of behavior could have had on the children in the building. The children are highly impressionable, and witnessing such hostile aggressive actions could have caused confusion, fear, and distress. The educators may also experience trauma from witnessing a parent being targeted and verbally assaulted in the school building. Not to mention the emotional impact that this has had on me and my family and our feeling of safety. If these two parents felt safe enough to verbally assault someone inside the lobby of our school, then what happens when it's a grocery store? What happens when it's at a band or orchestra concert? Chili night? Field day? How many more people in our community have to experience distress from this type of bullying before something's done? As a member of this community, I'm asking that steps be taken to address and prevent such incidents in the future. It's imperative that we ensure a safe and respectful environment. It's imperative that we ensure a safe and respectful environment for everyone: students, parents, educators, and administrators alike. I urge the committee to consider implementing measures that protect all individuals from verbal abuse and bullying, particularly when it occurs on school property, a space that's meant for safe learning, growth, and community. I would appreciate hearing plans and actions that are going to be taken to address the issue, as well as any steps that can be taken to prevent future occurrences. We cannot afford this type of behavior to continue being unchecked. Bullying in all forms casts a shadow over our communities, reaching beyond students to impact educators, administrators, parent and gardening volunteers, and school committee members here today. When this harmful behavior goes unchecked, it erodes trust, creates fear, and silences those who are essential to the growth and success of our schools. Teachers, administrators, and volunteers are often the first to be impacted as they dedicate their time and energy to fostering an environment of learning and safety. When they are met with disrespect or hostility, their ability to perform their roles effectively is compromised, and our schools suffer as a result, our children suffer as a result. Additionally, parental bullying introduces a toxic dynamic that threatens the collaborative spirit required to ensure every student has the support that they need to succeed. The unchecked spread of bullying within our educational spaces does not harm, just harm individuals, it weakens the very fabric of our school communities. It drives away valuable members, whether they're passionate educators, devoted volunteers, concerned parents, or even school committee members, just like many of the people in the room here. If we're to build the kind of inclusive, supportive, and successful communities that we envision, we must actively confront and eliminate bullying at all levels. Only then can we truly foster environments where everyone feels safe, respected, and empowered to contribute to the collective success of the students and our communities. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Let me just double-check, but I don't think I got any voice notes. Okay. So our next order of business is an executive session. So I move the Amherst Pollard Regional School Committee will now consider entering executive session pursuant to GLC 30A, Section 21A, 3. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and I too declare the APA negotiation with Units A, B, and C, Dykes litigation with the intent to return to open session.
Second.
Was that you?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Yep.
Is this motion subject to discussion? I believe it is.
I think so.
Yeah. So, I think I might have known, just because like, could we do this later in the evening?
Sure. We could.
Tabled motion?
Yep, we can move it down to later. That's fine. We do have to do something with the motion on the table.
I move to table the motion for executive session.
Excellent.
Second.
Was that you, Anna?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion on tabling the motion? Excellent. Tillman.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Bridgette.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Sarah Bass, yes, and Irv.
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no idea how to revise it though.
Okay, we can, that's a later problem. We can fix that later. Okay.
Tillman can fix it.
Tillman can fix it later. Are there any school committee announcements or subcommittee updates?
I'm not sure it's consistent announcement, but I just want to say I'm appalled by hearing the public comment about this incident, and unfortunately, the superintendent is not here to explain what the policies are to deal with a situation like that. But I hope we can discuss this at the next school committee meeting.
Okay. Jennifer.
I agree, and I'm equally appalled. I will note that I believe the speaker said this occurred at Cocker Farm, which would make it an Amherst School Committee issue?
It was Fort River.
Fort River, thank you, which is not within the purview of the Regional School Committee, but I, as the Amherst School Committee Chair, I will talk with the superintendent and figure out what to do.
Thank you.
I'll just have also another brief update, so that we don't have to talk about it later, which is that the Fiscal Sustainability Subcommittee met this week, and we just determined to postpone having this body review the letter to the Amherst Town Council. We're going to postpone it to a later meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Were there any other? Okay, so I do have an update from the APA Negotiations Team, which is the negotiations team for the APA 2025-2028 Contract Continued Our Interest-Based Bargaining. The final interests were presented and categorized. The team reached consensus on several areas of language, including elementary prep time, Unit B evaluation timeline, and snow day comp for full-year Unit B staff. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, February 13th. And these agreements reflect our shared commitment to fostering a collaborative, supportive environment for all of our members of our school community. We appreciate the dedication of everyone involved in this process and look forward to continuing our productive discussion. All right. Any further updates? Okay. So we have minutes from our last meeting, which, thank you so much to Victoria for writing these. That was amazing. So I will move that we approve the minutes of January 28th, 2025.
Second, Jennifer.
Thank you. Discussion edits? Yep, Sarah?
Well, I have many little edits that I could just give to you, but the only, the only one I really care about is that I think the BRIM system for the bullying report should be all caps, otherwise it doesn't.
Okay.
No one would understand what that is. It appears several times.
Any further? Nope. Okay. So, to approve the minutes as amended. Irv, how do you vote? Tillman, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Bridgette.
Yes.
Deb.
Irv is yes.
Oh, good job, yes, excellent. Thank you, Irv. All right, they are approved. We have our... Okay. Okay. So we have a standing superintendent update Megan will provide to us in just a moment. White one.
So while this low, I cannot least introduce myself. You guys got a really brief introduction when I let you know we were running behind before. My name is Megan Dusko, I'm Dr. Z's executive assistant for the district, and I also do labor relations. Okay, I'm gonna sit down and try to speak and present. Because the tech still is not working. But Dr. Z is unfortunately not feeling well tonight, so I'm going to be presenting on her behalf.
Something is not correct.
So please be patient while we deal with the tech, but I figured I could at least introduce myself while you are waiting on us. We drew a little... Okay. So first thing, I want to thank Dr. Z for giving me this opportunity to present to everyone. I'm kind of new to this leadership position, and the opportunity to develop my professional skills is super appreciated. One thing Dr. Z likes to do every time we have these meetings is remind everyone of our three district priorities. Usually those would be presented on the screen, but I'm just gonna kind of run through my points while we get those up. There we go.
Yes.
Beautiful. There we go. So these are the three district priorities, which are student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity. All of these priorities are things that Dr. Z tries to lead by daily. One really exciting thing is we had our second snow day of the year on February 6th. This was, we were kind of learning through our first experience as Dr. Z moved chair from the Virgin Islands. I would say it went much more smoothly than the first one, with Dr. Z making the decision to cancel the night before after carefully reviewing the forecast with other area superintendents, coordinating with our facilities department, and coordinating with the DPW. Our media and climate specialist has gotten some lovely pictures of her enjoying the snow. These are some of our winter sports highlights. I'm not going to read through the schedule, but feel free to take a look, and I believe our athletic director also posts it online. I would like to take a moment to highlight some of our winter sports that are recently starting in their postseason activities. So we had swimming and diving Central Western Sectionals, in which Bettsure Garcia came in first for the diving Central Western Sectional Championships. And then the girls' swimming qualified for states after placing third in the Central Western Sectionals. Nordic skiing also had states today. The girls got runner-up, second to Mount Greylock. The boys came in fifth, up from 11th last year, and there were 19 teams competing overall. We will also have some other postseason games this week, including indoor track has states on Thursday, and girls' swimming and diving have states on Saturday. One thing we've been doing recently is trying to highlight within our classrooms and within our schools the things that our students are doing. There's a lot people don't see and that we don't see sometimes in the office, and this is really important to us as a team. So we recently had the Performing Arts Gala, in which high school and middle school students performed dance, theater, and music. We will have a career exploration fair this Wednesday, so tomorrow, which is an opportunity for ninth through 12th grade students to browse, learn about different career paths, and like maybe see things that might not require a four-year college degree, see other opportunities such as doing Americor, becoming a carpenter, plumbers, cosmetologist, those types of things. ARMS Ultimate Disc, which is sport frisbee at the middle school, they did a contest for students to design the frisbee and the shirts. So the picture on there were some submissions that we received from students. And then our regional middle school math club, Math Counts, recently competed in a few different competitions. The American Mathematical Council's AMC 8 on January 28th, and the Connecticut Valley Math Counts Chapter Competition on February 8th. In the AMC 8 competition, our participation more than doubled from the previous year, with 33 students competing this year. We currently don't have the results, but we anticipate that three students may rank in the top 5% nationally, which is an improvement from last year's single top 5% finisher. At the Connecticut Valley Math Counts Chapter Competition, 11 of our students competed. Our team placed fifth overall, and I apologize if I pronounce this incorrectly, but Naam Nuyen achieved an impressive eighth-place individual finish and was one of only two competitors selected to advance to the Math Counts State Competition as an individual. And that competition will take place on March 1st. Additionally, the club will be participating in the FERMAT Division of the Math Pi Competition, which will be at the middle school in March. Briefly touching on the calendar with the winter break coming up, it's very slim this month. I wanted to take a moment to highlight that it is Black History Month, and we will be highlighting some of the things our schools are doing towards the end of the month. I just did not have them prepared today. February 12th, tomorrow, is the Career Exploration Fair at the high school. We have a Valentine's Day dance coming up on the 14th, this Friday, and then it is our winter break next week. I'm gonna touch on something that we've recently started doing, which is our HR pop-ups. So we started these in our schools with the hope of giving our staff a little bit more of an opportunity to speak to HR, regain trust with that division. If you read Dr. Z's entry findings, one thing we found was that there was a lot of trust lacking due to past incidents within our HR department, and we were hoping that by making them more accessible, by giving them opportunities to come sit one-on-one with our team, that could help rebuild that trust and make them feel like they were getting questions answered, even if they couldn't leave their buildings. We're gonna continue doing those pop-ups with the next one for a regional school being at the high school on February 28th. We also have ones at the other schools I'm just not mentioning because they're not a part of this district. We've also started doing school-based discussions with Dr. Z. So these are very similar to the HR pop-ups, in which we are going one-on-one into the buildings with the superintendent to allow staff to come sit down with her and bring any concerns directly to her, get to know her, feel like that communication line is open. We started these last week and have continued into this week, and we'll be doing some over the break as well with administrators. We will do the middle school and high school, the regional schools, this Thursday. And we really want to bring these into the spring as well, because we did hear that some staff want more opportunities to attend after hours, not during the workday, so we are working on that in the future. I am going to touch on this very, very briefly, because I am not the budget specialist. Shannon Bernackia and Kate Holcomb are, but we did have our four towns meeting this past weekend, in which we were able to have the select boards from each town come in, discuss, review the budget. And we've also been collaborating with building and department leaders to discuss potential cuts for the district as we move forward with our deficit. And that is it from me. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Dr. Z usually likes to read a quick quote at the end of her update, so I'm gonna read it aloud and then we're good. "Education is for improving the lives of others and for leaving your community and world better than you found it." Marian Wright Edelman. If you have questions, I'm welcome to try to answer them, but...
Just gonna make one quick, the Performing Arts Gala, it didn't happen because of the snowstorm.
Oh, okay.
So I believe it's happening in April.
Okay, thank you for providing that update, I was not aware.
Sarah, did you have the same thing?
Okay, thank you.
I missed it.
So it will be happening, and it will highlight those things, but it was canceled, and I had that oversight, I apologize.
No problem. All right, well, thank you very much, Megan. Okay.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
We can use... Yep. Okay. Okay, so we were going to have some students come present to us, but they couldn't come today, so they're gonna come at a future meeting and talk to us about their engineering for socially good. So next up is we have our ARPS Transportation Bid Recommendation with a potential vote. Shanning, do you want to take this one?
Yeah, so we have Rich Labrie here, who was really crucial to this transportation bid, and his assistance was phenomenal. I don't know if we would have been able to do it without him, and he is going to provide his recommendation and walk through this, and I'll be here for support and additional questions as well.
Good evening. Can you, everybody hear me?
Sort of.
Yes.
Yes.
It's unfortunately as good as it gets.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
All right, let me first apologize if I start coughing. I'm recovering from the flu, so that's why I asked to be remote. But I do want to acknowledge before I start my recommendation, the work of both Kate, Shannon, Rupert, and Lori with regard to spending a great deal of time with me, both structure the bid as well as talk about a bidding strategy to get you to where you need to be over the next several years with regard to transportation. The bid specs were dated in November of 2024 and opened in January 15th. In addition to the bid document itself, we had three addenda that were submitted, one in December and two in January. We answered all questions from all bidders by written addendum and sent out to all of the prospective bidders. Bid packages were mailed to 76 people, representing 64 potential bidders. We had a non-mandatory bidders meeting held on December 20th. Four companies attended that, New England Transit, FM Kuzmeskis, Travel Cuz, Five Star Transportation, and Beacon Mobility Corporation. On January 15th, the bids were publicly open by the district interim assistant director of finance and recorded. We had only two bidders submitted a bid by the required deadline. Those were Five Star Transportation and FM Kuzmeskis, in parentheses, Travel Cuz. And we did our analysis of the bids. We found that FM Kuzmeskis to be both responsive and responsible according to our specified bid criteria. However, we did identify a mathematical computational error and subsequently corrected that on their bid form. It had to do with the late bus cost for Pelham. It had, we, under Chapter 30B Mass General Laws, if we find a mathematical computational error, we're required to correct it and notify the bidder of that correction. And we notified them of that error. Our due diligence review of the bid submitted by Five Star also found them to be both responsive and responsible according to our bid criteria. However, Five Star did not provide a bid on all of the specified transportation categories. They did not provide a bid on the out-of-district special ed transportation category. We then proceeded to compare the bid cost by each of the responsible and responsible bidders. We have a rather large spreadsheet, which hopefully you had a chance to review as part of our recommendation that was submitted. Our review of their confidential financial statements for years 23 and 24 indicated that they, being Beacon Mobility, had the financial resources and ability to perform this contract. We conducted our reference checks for FM Kuzmeskis being the lowest apparent bidder. We contacted 11 of their references, school districts in Western Massachusetts, and we found that their composite average score, usually a 1 through 5 scale, was 4+. And identified a cost difference between the two bidders of approximately $965,000. Almost all the references provided indicated that Kuzmeskis was providing good to excellent service, and therefore, we considered them to be the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. In addition, Amherst reported that when Kuzmeskis previously held part of their contract, the services provided were very good. Having determined that FM Kuzmeskis is the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, we informed them of so, but had their first-year cost exceeded the amount budgeted capability by the district. Under Mass General Law 30B, it allows us to negotiate down with the low bidder to the extent it does not prejudice another bidder or does not substantially change a specification in the bid specs. And as a result of that, FM Kuzmeskis, again Beacon Mobility, their owner, agreed to reduce their first-year cost and to amortize part of that cost over gaining four years of the contract. Again, that's spelled out on the spreadsheet that was included. The result of the reduction of the first year went from a 14.41% increase the first year to an 8.99% increase the first year, almost matching what Shannon had given us as the target for the budget. In addition, on various cost increases by transportation category, it was evident that some of the routes that should be performed by the district-owned drivers and vehicles made cherry picking worthwhile regarding minimizing the budget impact. It is our opinion that the current revised specifications and contract will provide the transportation management with the contract management prerogatives and with penalties for both contracted non-performance and underperformance. And we believe that this will provide the district with the basis for a good contract going forward. Given Kuzmeskis' history of providing relatively high-quality transportation in Western Mass school districts for over 25 years and our analysis of the bid submitted, we recommend the acceptance of the school transportation bid submitted and as negotiated by FM Kuzmeskis, Beacon Mobility, on the basis of their being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. At the, as a result of the cost negotiation, the low bid cost between the second low bidder and the low bidder is approximately $1.1 million. Therefore, based on the previous, we recommend that the bid entitled School Transportation dated November 27, 2024 be awarded to FM Kuzmeskis of Gill, Mass. for FY '26 through '35 years at a total negotiated bid cost of $17,803,491.58 for those routes and transportation categories identified inclusive of their performance bond on the basis of their being the lowest responsible and responsible bidder. We have to answer any questions with regard to the process or the result.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Anna?
This is a little strange question, but I thought we had some kind of application for an electric bus grant that would, and I'm just wondering if that has any impact on the selection of the transportation company? Am I totally misremembering this?
No, it does not, because we have included in the bid specifications that in the event that Amherst receives electric buses, that the contractor and the district will negotiate the cost impact in good faith.
Okay.
Great, thanks. Jennifer, did I see your...
Yes. So thank you for that presentation. I see from the document that Rich is a senior associate at Alliance Education Association. And so I'm just trying to figure out Alliance Education Association is like an organization that helps districts with bids like this? I'm just wondering who this nice man is who just presented to us? What the relationship is, like what, who are these?
Let me introduce myself. Prior to retiring, I was the superintendent of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. Over a period of seven or eight years, we took over all of the school transportation for our seven-member school districts in the suburban Springfield area. We were running about 280 buses. We were the largest publicly-owned bus fleet in Massachusetts. And over the course of that, those seven or eight years, I learned a lot about the transportation business. When I retired, I started doing some consulting for Futures Education, which you may be familiar with. They were bought out by a group of investors, and those of us in consulting in Western Massachusetts started AEA, Alliance Education Associates, and moved our clients under a new umbrella, under the new company.
Great, got it. Thank you.
I've been doing this for about 13 years since I retired, and I've probably conducted efficiency studies and bids for probably close to 300 school districts across the country.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions?
I was just gonna say that as we're looking at budget cuts, it's quite astounding to me to look at this at the per-day cost to move certain pupils or to move one pupil from point A to point B. It looks like the bid price is $250 for that, so that just is, it seems a lot. But I'm not saying it's not a lot, it's just, it seems sad, that's all.
I have a question about the renegotiated first year that you described. It's great that they lowered their price there, but does that mean that then there's an unexpected bump between the first and the second year? Maybe not unexpected, we see it, but will we be in trouble with the budget in year two because only year one was reduced?
I don't think, I don't think you will be, only because your year-one cost is higher than your year-two, three, four, or five cost, and your reimbursement will be higher from year one to cover some of the bump in years two going forward, assuming that the legislature continues to appropriate to the level that they have had for Chapter 71, Regional State Aid.
Thank you.
That was what I was gonna say. We get a fair, what, 80-plus, 90, close to 90% back. We get 80 or 90% of the transportation costs reimbursed from the state because we're a regional school district, thanks to Leverett and...
Palom?
Shusberry. Leverett and Shusberry, because of their rural schools. Right? Is that it, or is it because we're a regional school? Okay, we get a lot of money back, so it's not nearly as bad.
Thank you.
As long as they continue to do that.
All right, any further questions? All right, Jennifer?
Is a motion in order? I move that the bid entitled School Transportation dated November 27, 2024 be awarded to FM Kuzmeskis Incorporated of Gill, Massachusetts for fiscal year 2026 to 2030, five years, at the total negotiated bid cost of $17,830,491.58 for those routes and transportation categories identified inclusive of the performance bond on the basis of their being the lowest responsible and responsive bidder and in the best public interest.
Second? Second?
All right.
Was that Anna?
Yes. Yep. Any further discussion? Tillman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yep, yes.
Earth?
Yes.
And Sarabas? Yes. So it's passed, we are unanimous. Thank you both for all of the work that must have gone into this. I can only imagine. That seems like a lot. So thank you, everybody, very much. All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up, our track and fields.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Fortunately, bidding for the new track and field project is a much simpler process than transportation, so I don't have anywhere as nearly as much to say, but I have good news as well to say. Bob Parent, we've met before with the town of Amherst. The good news is we took bids last Thursday, 2:00 PM. Bids were submitted electronically through the bid documents portal, worked out very well. It's actually a very good system that helps to avoid lots of mistakes during the bidding process. So the mathematical errors and things like that that you might typically see or documents being missed, it really helps to streamline the process. The district received 10 bids, which was good. It was quite a few more than I would have expected. I was hoping to get two or three bids. All you need is one bid, that's the right bid. It was great to see 10 bids. The low three, four bids were pretty close to what the estimate was. The good news is the low bid, including all of the alternates, was submitted by a company called MJ Cataldo. And including all of the bid alternates, we are still $400,000 below what has been currently appropriated for the project, which means that the district could award the contract with the base bid, all of the alternates, and still have about 10% contingency going into construction, which is, again, what we had hoped for, so we got there. Myself and Kevin, who you met before from SLR, have both done research on Cataldo. Neither one of us have worked with them, but the former firm that I worked with has worked with them. I talked to a good friend of mine who has worked with them personally, had very good things to say about the firm. So did Kevin. Kevin doesn't have direct experience, but he happened to be at, I think it was the New England Sports and Track Conference the day the bids were received, and he was able to reach out to a number of peers in the industry that have worked with Cataldo. And same thing, they had great things to say about the firm. So it would be our recommendation that the district vote to award the contract to the low bidder, MJ Cataldo. Their bid documents were all complete, all the bid documents from all the bidders are complete. We had no issues along that way. And I'd further recommend that not only the district vote to award the contract, but vote to grant the superintendent authorization to sign the contract when we go through the contract document preparation process. The next step after the contract is awarded is that performance bonds and payment bonds are requested from the contractor, insurance certificates are requested, they get reviewed, they get put into compliance with the contract requirements, and then at that point, the contract is ready for execution. That typically takes a week or two. We would really like to kind of keep this project rolling at this point and make certain that Cataldo knows that the project is moving forward so they can get it onto their schedule and try to lock things in to make certain that we get it done this season.
Excellent. Sarah?
That's all wonderful news. Thank you both for all your work on this. It's wonderful that we have enough money already committed to fund even all the add-ons or bid alternates, whatever the term is. But I'm wondering where that leaves some of the CPAC requests? Because I think a couple towns have already approved some funds, but then there was one that... It wasn't gonna, Leverett, I think, wasn't gonna vote until the spring. But I know because of the supplanting element of CPAC money, we can't... You can't use CPAC money to pay off something that you already voted on and contracted to do. So do we want to say to Leverett, let's say, never mind, we don't need your money, which I know Amherst won't like, the town council, that is? Or do we want, I don't know, is there one little project that we should not vote to proceed with yet and offer it to Leverett? I mean, thoughts? Dave, you must be familiar with the CPAC, the CPAC element.
I'm not a financial expert, but I've worked with lots of people that are. And just my understanding of the supplanting issue in talking with the Amherst Finance Director is the issue is you can't supplant operating funds with CPAC funds. And she was pretty clear, we actually read the state statute. It's not an issue of, so you can't take something that you are going to pay to mow the grass or fertilize something or do something else that was normally an operating budget and take CPA funds to pay for that. It doesn't mean that you can't use CPA funds for capital expenditures.
You're sure? You're sure, Dave? Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, that's our understanding. I don't know if Shannon has anything she wanted to add, but that's what we have heard from our finance director at the town.
It wouldn't be a supplanting.
That it wouldn't be supplanting. And our intention is still to proceed to Leverett in the spring. Again, I think I would defer to Shannon on if Leverett proceeds with their town meeting vote in a positive way. I believe the number, it's been a while, but I believe it's $176,000. If they proceed, then that would be essentially added to the available funds. And I don't know, Shannon, we've had a couple of brief conversations about this. Maybe you could speak to if we have more funds and the project is completed on budget or under budget or under the available funds we have, what would happen then, Shannon?
So first, I just want to say I really would hope that Leverett goes through with approving the funds because it's our goal to use all of those CPA funds first and then reduce the capital debt that was approved, which would then benefit all four towns. which would then benefit all four towns in that reduction. So, so I would hope that Leverett would approve, and if we did have extra funds, not that we'd take action right now, but potentially they could be approved to maybe purchase the bleachers that we are not currently in the project, are under. I don't know if that's a possibility, but it's definitely something worth thinking about.
All right, Tillman?
Again, apologies on behalf of Leverett.
No, no.
We're, we're getting there. I wanna note that the bid documents for M.J. Cataldo lists, I think, five example projects that they have done recently. And all of them came in a, a higher final cost than the original cost. So let's not praise the day before the evening and get too excited about it, there's contingency that we need to worry about. And so there may be need for those funds, even if you stay within the exact scope of the project.
Thank you. Super excited, I'm sure Mr. Zomeck is even more excited, he's been on this journey a lot longer than I have. Are we on target for the process to be completed in time for when we anticipated at fall?
Let me have Bob speak to that, because there, there's been a little adjustment based on time.
Okay.
As we're wrapping up developing the bidding documents, the designer got a lot of feedback from potential bidders that they really needed to have up, up to a hundred and twenty days to complete the project. Given when we can turn the fields over to the contractor once school is done, that does push us into the fall season. We've already talked to Victoria, given her the heads up, so she can start planning for the fact that she's going to have to have other locations. And it, it's a short-term impact without a doubt, but it's a short-term impact for a very, you know, positive long-term investment.
Of course.
We are on track, but we do expect, again, we haven't had those discussions with Cataldo yet. So maybe Cataldo's schedule might be more aggressive, but what we built into the bidding documents was a hundred and twenty-day completion schedule in order to get the competitive bids that we received.
Jennifer?
I'm working on a motion, so wording for the motion, so when it comes. Award the contract to the low bidder, and then what did you say about permitting or impairing the superintendent to sign what?
The, the contract.
Okay.
Which typically would be signed after we receive and review bidding, I mean, performance bonds, payment bonds, and insurance certificates.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, maybe Richard wants.
Yeah, thank you both and so many people on this committee as well for all your work in getting us to this point, it feels really good. I have a very small question, which is in the Cataldo bid, the price for the fence is so much less than all the other ones. Like are we getting a different product for that, or what's that about?
Bidding on alternates sometimes can be very strange. Because it's strategy sometimes that bidders try to anticipate what the owner might do. Or, you know, so there, there is absolutely gamesmanship built into the pricing sometimes. So I wouldn't read too much into that differential, perhaps the monies that the other bidders carried in that first alternate. Cataldo may have put it in their base bid, maybe, so it's, it's hard to really tell.
Okay, so I can give you a little information, so. I didn't look at the plans, I didn't read the specs. But, so there, part of the bidding documents are specifications. So it says you need to have this type of fence that does this, that does this. So everybody has the exact same thing that will, like, be produced at the end. So you're not getting like a subpar fence, even though it was half as much money for their alternate as whatever. Like, there's a whole bunch of reasons why that can happen sometimes, but it, because of the way specifications are written for public projects especially, like, the goal for the whole thing is like to get the best product for the cheapest price for the whole thing, right? So I wouldn't, it's just.
And as work items go, fencing is about sort of as straightforward as it gets.
Yes.
You've got the gauge of the fence, you've got the type of the coating, you've got the height of the fence, you have the concrete base, you know, it's, it's pretty black and white.
Yep. Deb?
So I wanna thank the town of Amherst again for stepping in and, and helping us with this project at a, at a critical time to keep it moving forward. I've, I've followed some of the finance committee conversations, and I would like to say that I think the sooner, sooner rather than later getting that MOU, MOA written, so that the concerns that have been voiced in finance committee regarding the region's ability to properly manage the field, maintain it, supervise it, and plan for usage, usage hours as well as the towns. I, I think that would really go a long way to adding information to the conversation instead of some of the speculation that's been taking place. So I, I would, I would really appreciate that, I don't know how to facilitate that, but.
We are working on that, that is next on our list.
Yeah.
We have a CPA agreement, we have a CPA agreement with, with the region, which has to happen for all CPA projects. But the next thing is to work on some sort of MOU with, with the superintendent, Shannon will be around the table, facilities, your new director of operations, I believe, as well as our DPW. So we wanted to get this to you, get this contract locked up, get a schedule going, and then that is next on our list.
Thank you so much.
Excellent, any further questions?
I move that we award the contract for the Amherst-Palom Regional High School Track and Fields Improvement Project to low bidder M.J. Cataldo, Inc., based on their bid references and experience, and that we authorize the superintendent to sign the contract.
Second?
Any further discussion?
Should we either reference a document or put in the total value of the project with all bid alternates?
I think it would be good for the motion yes to specify it's the base bid plus all the alternates.
Is that the four point one million?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll amend the motion to include award the contract in the amount of four million, one hundred and five thousand, eight hundred dollars, which is the base contract plus all the alternates.
Excellent. All right, any further discussion? Irv, how do you vote?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Bob, William?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Tillman?
Yes.
And Sarabes, yes. Yay! So excited, thank you all so much for all the work, this was a whole heap.
I just wanna say thank you, I've been the, kind of the front person for the last couple of years on this project. And, and we stepped up and stepped in, and we're happy to do that. I wanted to thank all of you, the CPA committees, all the, the hill, the, the, the towns that did put in their dollars. And hopefully Leverett will be coming in the spring. Also wanted to thank Bob, because without Bob, we would not be where we are today. Because I can do a number of things, but Bob made a lot of this happen. So it's been great partnering with him on this project and a number of other projects in town. So thank you all, and it's gonna be really exciting, and we'll start sometime, we hope, in June, right, is our goal?
Yeah, we'll have discussions with the contractor, maybe there could be some off-site work happening. For instance, is a water main that has to run across Mattoon Street, I have no idea what their plan is. But if there are things that they can start working on and not impact the field, that'd be great.
We look forward to cutting ribbons.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yay! Oh my goodness. Great success! Okay.
Point of order.
Yes.
Might I suggest we do our executive session now so that we can let Ms. Ortiz go home?
Yes, so I looked it up, we just have to, uh, motion to take it from the table.
I, I move to take from the table what I placed on the table.
Second.
Tillman, who's got the second?
Uh, Jennifer.
She's good.
All right, is there any further discussion again? Okay, excellent, oh wait, do we have to?
Yes.
We have to vote on taking it off the table, all right.
And then we vote.
And then we vote on the motion.
We'll have to remember what it is. Oh, it's.
Executive session.
Yep, so how do you vote to take the motion off the table?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William? Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sarabes, yes, all right, so our motion is back on the table for the regional school committee to move into executive session.
Any discussion?
Any further discussion? Excellent, okay. Tillman?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Yes.
And Sarabes, yes, okay, we are in executive session.
And we will return.
And we will return, yes. And we will return. Yes. Back in session at eight thirty-one. Want to take roll call attendance again? I'm gonna say no. Making an executive decision. Alright, so next up is our four towns meeting debrief. I had it on here in case there was anything. Oh. Poorly written agenda item. We needed to talk about, um, for moving forward. Shannon, did you have anything you wanted to add or you needed anything from us?
No, I just wanted to be here to answer questions or if there was something you wanted to see and I, and it was something I could easily pull up, I would be happy to do it and just be a resource.
Excellent. Thank you. Sarah?
Uh, two things. One, it... My feeling is that the meeting was pretty positive. Except possibly Amherst Council or some councilors are not happy with the proposed, if it is even proposed, but the assessment method, um, that we were focusing on. I hope that doesn't become a stumbling block because it is my fervent hope that we wrap this budget up much sooner than we did last year. For a whole number of reasons. So, I... I mean, that's just my thought. But, um, I wanted to ask Shannon, I just want to be sure that Shannon or Dr. Z or everybody is, knows what the, uh, calendar constraints are. Like, I don't know if all the towns, regional towns have set their town meetings, but they have to have the budget forty days, you know, in advance and a- all those things. I just, I just hope the people who need to know, know.
So I can speak for the region. I know Shannon has been in touch with, um, all of the member towns about their timelines for when they would need information because I had the same concern. Um, we are going to be scheduling our budget hearing for... Oh, now I don't remember the day. Shannon, do you remember? Is it the tw-?
Uh, Tuesday the, or Wednesday the twenty-sixth.
So, of February. Wednesday, yes. So, uh, I will be sending out that invitation shortly. We, um, so then that will give us time to have, you know, we will have time with our budget. We, it will be a special meeting that will just be just for the budget hearing. So, yeah, and then that gives the towns enough time to do whatever they have to do for their posting requirements. Bridgette?
I guess, uh, a few things came to mind during the four towns meeting. I would say like, one thing that was very positive is that the towns are really willing, especially the three smaller towns, to try and work and get us to where we need to be. And to even, I think Pelham came forward when thinking about ways to kick back onto that one point two plus deficit. But I think for me, looking at the scenario and remembering where we were at last year, seeing exactly what positions that entails. I know this committee made a commitment last year to not, um, not doing away with student-facing positions and I still feel like those teaching positions, when you lose a teaching position, now you've got bigger class sizes and that's one of the pressures that everyone's talking about, especially at the middle school. And, um, you're just going to a situation. So I'd like to see, I guess, when we get to that point, what type of scenario could we have financially where we might be able to still pull back so we're not losing teachers? Or that type of thing. So that's, I guess, what was on my mind is that, while it's great that we're having some coordination and some collaboration, especially the, the, um, energy bought by the little, smaller towns was great. I really would like to be thinking about ways that we don't get to that big of a deficit and that many cuts.
Alright, Tillman?
Yeah, so one thing I want to convey from Leverett's perspective was that there was, uh, a little bit of disappointment that the difference in assessment and the percentage gap between what the regional agreement assessment method is versus what we currently are, um, was explained as a, oh, Amherst has been subsidizing Leverett and the other towns. And that, i- it is true that Amherst has been paying a bigger share, but the point that the folks from Leverett made is that nobody has asked Leverett to pay more. In fact, Leverett has been in previous four towns meeting asking that we all pay more. And we're limited by how much the other towns wanted to pay. And now we basically switched the assessment method, but it's not fair to just now say, well, you know, now you're way behind. This was the, the assessment method that we had agreed on. And, yes, they're willing to work on, on catching up, but I think if we phrase it as a, well, you've been living off our subsidies, then that doesn't paint the correct picture because, as you know, Leverett is generally supportive of, you know, supporting our schools and they have not been asked to pay more. And so coming back and saying it's a subsidy is not fair.
Deb?
I apologize for the ill-chosen words of my town councilors. I also dispute their words. I have a question for Shannon. When you say statutory method, do you mean you look at the whole budget, whatever it is, the twenty-five million, and then you divide that up by the five-year rolling average percentages based on student population? Or is it with the minimum aid amount included? The, the local, I'm sorry, the local minimum contributions for the different towns pulled out and then you do the percentage of what's left? I know only Shannon understands that, but...
Yep, so I actually, I didn't get to it today. I am hopeful I'll get to this tomorrow. But I was going to send out to all of, uh, the town councils and to school committee the backend of how the statutory method is calculated for transparency and to help mitigate these questions. I am not in a position to explain it right now.
Okay.
But I do want to know that's forthcoming and, and I'm hopeful, uh, to send that out this week.
Thank you, Shannon.
Can I have two, two quick things? So, that statement ba- made is disputable by the ca- not by Shannon, by that counselor. Um, so by all, by no means do I, well, I said that. I, I don't necessarily agree. I think there's an argument for Schutzbury actually subsidized, subsidizing the rest of us. But that's a different story. I will say that yet again to my chagrin, remember that, um, bombshell of a financial indicators meeting, November fourth, where we found out that, um, the town of Amherst had a five-point-seven million dollar surplus? Well, between November first, when that spreadsheet came out and they gave it to us on November fourth, and subsequent spreadsheet on November seventh, which I just came across because of the VCG meeting, that surplus is six-point-seven million dollars. So in the week between eleven-one and eleven-seven, somehow the number has increased. And I don't understand surplus all that well. I don't understand municipalities that well, but I do understand dollars. And that's a lot of dollars. And we have a lot of need and there's a narrative out there that I think really many different narratives that stand challenging. One is that Amherst can't afford a higher percentage. The whole pattern of, oh, look, we've got all this extra money at the end of the year. Now, they have not been at a five percent surplus of the whole for four years running. It's five-point-nine. If you include the, um, the six-point-seven million, we're up at six percent over, over the income. And those numbers change from year to year to year. You go back to the actuals from twenty-twenty-four and they've changed. And I don't know how to get to the bottom of it. I have not been successful with the town council. Mostly they tell me that, um, we should be focused now. So I don't know how to break that cycle, but it's not helping students. And that's all I got to say.
Anna?
I also dispute the idea that they have to equally increase the, the finances for each area of the government. And so each area of the government gets a three-point-five percent increase over their budget from last year. I think that doing it that way doesn't take into account, A, overages that they allocate to the transportation department every year after the budget has already been set. I think it doesn't take into account differences in different types of growth in each area. And so to say that every, every area of the government gets the exact same increase over last year's budget is whitewashing a whole bunch of differences that happen within those different areas. And so they need to rethink how they're talking about increases for each areas of the government. And it shouldn't just be a blanket three-point-five percent for every, every, everybody. But what I will say is, I was relatively pleased with how four towns meeting went. I think that it was nice to hear, um, Leverett saying that they could pay six-point-five percent. I think it was nice to hear Pelham admit that they needed to do more and that they were going to try to do more, even though it's a little bit unclear how much more they're gonna do. To, to understand that they are way behind the other towns and they have to do something to catch up, I think is, is really good to hear. And, you know, I, I, I do agree with Amherst. We have to figure out how to get a little bit closer to the, the statutory method that we've all agreed on, that we're still so far away from. But I, it's nice to know that we're moving in that direction.
Thank you. Uh, Deb, you had a follow-up?
Yeah, so as somebody who loves to dig in numbers, since you mentioned it, since you brought it up. So, of the sectors of the Amherst town budget, one of those sectors consistently spends less than allocated to that sector by half, two, three-quarters to one, to one and a half million dollars. So that's one of the, one of the ways that that surplus gets developed, that that underspending is considered the town's money because it comes from that sector. Regardless of whether or not they need it. So, that's all I got.
Alright, Bridgette?
And just briefly, I know we mentioned it in the letter, but the retirements for the town and whatever, chunked out, they'll go up eleven-point-seven percent. And that isn't included in the other areas, three-point-five, but we get three-point-five, but we have to pay our own retirement, which also goes up, you know, almost twelve percent. So, it's, there's just, it's just not a fair playing ground in the way that Amherst is framing it. And also there, I think that there's a lot of the way that it's framed is blaming the schools instead of looking at the fact that over, uh, since like the last five years, they give less and less to the schools. I know they have projects on their mind, but the situation in the schools keeps getting worse, not better.
Erv?
I mean, I, I, I think I agree with everyone in terms of what they're saying. However, I, I would believe that we need to have another message that we send to the town. That doesn't, uh, rely upon us criticizing the way that they come about doing their budgets. I don't think that gets us anywhere. Where, what I do think is that, uh, that we can say with a unified voice that we, we cannot live within the, a three-point-five and consider ourselves to be educators or taking the care of the students, uh, under our charge. That the town therefore needs to recognize that the schools are a unique unit of town government and that there are a large number of costs that we cannot control. And therefore that has to be taken into consideration. And not, and so what I'm, I guess my, my, what I want to say is that we need to have a unified message that is positive in nature and allows the town to, uh, generate the funds for our needs without criticizing the way they go about doing their business.
Alright, any further discussion? Yep, Jennifer?
I, I think we can do both. I think we can do both, state what we need and offer some friendly criticism about, between their business. The FSS, uh, uh, we had on the agenda, uh, a revised version of the letter that we looked at last time and we decided to table it until the budget book and presentation come out for the regional, for the region, which should be next week. And then, um, and then we will develop, um, when we have more information to work with, we will develop something hopefully for the- and then we will develop, when we have more information to work with, we will develop something hopefully for the regional school committee to look at at our first meeting in March.
Excellent, thank you. Tillman.
To follow up on what Irv said, maybe one way of illustrating the challenge that we have, where we have costs that are under our control and costs that are not under our control, is to separate those out in the presentation to the town and say, look, this is, these are things, insurance, right? This is totally not under our control. And at the town, what is it, BGP, whatever.
BCG.
BCG. Meeting, the meeting started with the conversation of, well, the insurance rates have gone up. Nobody said, well, we're not gonna pay insurance or the insurance has really had to come down to three-point-five percent max, let's, you know, tell them that they can't go above that. Right, because that's not something that we control. But, you know, I, I think we get the message of, well, you know, and deal with it and, and what happens is that we then get squeezed on the program. And so maybe by separating out those, those costs that we can control versus those that we don't, will show that we have been shrinking in terms of what we can control because we've been making up these disproportionate increases in line items that we don't control by cutting program.
Thank you, I like that idea. Okay. Irv, is your hand back up?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to piggyback on what Tillman said, we need to separate those costs out. Transportation, special education, et cetera, are, are costs and also, and in that are the state mandates that we have to comply with.
Thank you. Okay, so, next up is segue into Amherst BCG backup rep. I was hoping maybe Anna. You would do that.
This is backup for Tillman?
Backup for Tillman, yeah.
Sure. I'll do it.
My backup for me? What did I do?
You're on the budget coordinating committee?
I am.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
I've been there, yeah.
I know, I know, but.
When you can't go.
If you can't go, Anna will go.
Okay, you're planning for my early demise? Okay.
No, I just.
If you're ill or unable to attend.
Things and they often meet at like noon or two or something right in the middle of most people's workdays.
Is he the only rep?
For the region.
Okay.
He is our regional rep, so.
So I am literally his substitute?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent.
Just let me know.
Thank you. All right, so we postponed our letter to the town council for possibly March thirteenth. We do not have any, oops, gifts. What did I say? Yes, eleven. Sorry, this has been a really long day. We don't have any gifts, I don't have any warrants, we have future agenda items. Okay, William.
One, I was just back up, I was confused on the four towns meeting debrief and on the Amherst BCG backup. It has the second reads of policies on those.
That is my fault.
Okay, no, that's fine.
I copied and pasted and forgot to erase. Sorry.
So I'm gonna say this, I think for like the tenth meeting, that's a little exaggeration, but I feel like that. Bullying, BRIM process update, procedures and policies, I keep asking for this every meeting and we're not having it. We did get a BRIM numbers update that was not at a meeting, so we didn't really get to ask questions, but it was rolled out. So I really would like that to be on the meeting. The other thing is, we have not, it was brought to my attention earlier today that we need to do a mid-year evaluation on the superintendent, which we have never done since I've been here. And I guess I have a question because I know that on that subcommittee, it is myself and Anna and Irv. I, I, did you pull yourself off that subcommittee or are you still on that subcommittee?
I don't think he knows you're talking about this.
I haven't, I haven't officially withdrawn from that committee at all.
You have not, okay, I was confused, I thought maybe you had, so then you're still on that subcommittee?
Again, I haven't officially withdrawn, so I'm still on the subcommittee.
Okay.
Awesome.
So.
So we need to have the mid-year evaluation.
So whoever your chair is can.
Yes, I would circle around.
Perfect, coordinate that. Sarah.
So I hope the academic calendar is, will be ready very soon. And I assume that'll be a joint, it'd be most efficient to have three-committee joint meeting to do that, so hopefully very soon, I'm, I'm sure people are anxious. And, and then just agenda planning in general, I think, I appreciate Jennifer writing motions on the fly. It would be really good to have them written out ahead of time if we can, just be sure we're catching every word and it's complete and correct.
Tillman, did you have your?
I had the calendar too.
All right, Deb.
I don't know which committee this is under, but town council, a town counselor has been encouraging me to ask the superintendent to revisit the issue with Desi about whether or not the sixth grade could be included in the region. So I don't, you know, that's just, I'm putting it out there because it was requested of me.
Being added to the regional agreement, is that what? I, I, I just, I'm not understanding, I'm sorry.
Okay, so the sixth grade move, which you probably don't know about because we discussed it in the Amherst School Committee meeting. Originally, the intention when the sixth grade moved to the middle school was for it to be, the hope was for it to be included in the regional school system. And Desi said that couldn't happen because it didn't work to the advantage of all member towns. And town council saying, can we revisit that?
Bridgette.
Just really quickly, Doug spoke with Desi at length, Dr. Z spoke with Desi at length. Desi said there is no way we can do that and be fair to the other towns, the only way would be if the other towns wanted to move their sixth graders in. I think everyone's clear that's not happening, so I don't know how we, how, what we would do with that.
Sarah.
Desi also said that it would take special legislation to allow just Amherst's sixth graders. So, so you can tell.
I withdraw my agenda.
Perhaps you can tell the counselor, we've what we've, what we've said here, yeah.
Okay, and I do think as part of some of the conversation from our four towns meeting is that we should have a deeper discussion about the middle school group. Okey-dokey.
So two things.
Oh, sorry, yep.
I would say if your counselor really wants to do that, then their first step needs to be going to the other towns to convince them to put their sixth graders in the region. And you got this email from some person who wants us to have a resolution to support a phone-free middle, or middle and high school and I just, I wanna feel whether it's something that we want to discuss about creating a resolution to support this legislation or whether we just wanna let it go.
I would say that it might be nice for us to understand what the phone policy is in the middle school and high school. So that could be an update because what I've heard is the policy is very different than what I've experienced the practice to be in the middle school. What I've heard is the policy and the practice seem to match in the high school, but there is a discrepancy in the middle school, so it might be nice to have an update on what it is, this cell phone policy.
Okay. Did you have your hand up Tillman? Okay.
All right, thank you. I'm too slow today.
All right, anything?
I move to adjourn.
Tillman.
Second, Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Oh, she's so good.
Tillman.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
Anna.
Yes.
Sarah.
Yes.
William.
Yes.
Bridgette.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Sarah Beth, yes.